Good evening. I would like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting to order for June 25th, 2025. The time is now 7:01 PM. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll call of council members.
Here.
Here. Is excused tonight.
Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Molinar?
Also excused.
Councilmember DeSaro?
Here.
Here.
Becky, item two is the approval of tonight's council meeting agenda. First, any proposed changes to the agenda tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to add item I, the North County Public Defense Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Melissa, second by Richard to add item I, the Public Defense Contract, to tonight's agenda. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Agenda passes. Thank you. Okay, we are on to item three, which is community comments. If there's anyone present in council chambers tonight that would like to address council, come on up to the podium, state your name and your city of residence, and we ask that you keep your comments limited to about three minutes, if you would please. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jason Hansey. I'm a former kratom addict, and I'm here to ask the council to take fast, common sense action to regulate kratom, particularly the sale of highly concentrated kratom extracts in our city. Kratom is often marketed as a natural supplement for pain relief or anxiety, but what's being sold in stores today, especially in the form of concentrated extracts and shots, is far more potent and dangerous than most people realize. Well, traditional kratom powder has been used in some cultures for centuries. The modern extracts are another story. These products can be 10 to 100 times stronger than natural leaf, and they're often sold in gas stations or vape shops with no dosage guidance or health warnings. Some are labeled 10 times or 50 times, while others give no indication of their potency at all. A 2021 study in frontiers in pharmacology found that metragenie, kratom's primary psychoactive compound, varied by more than 500% across commercial products. That kind of inconsistency puts its users at serious risk. People have no idea how much they're actually consuming, and the medical system is not prepared to help. I've personally spoken with five different medical professionals, including my primary care physician, an ER doctor, and two addiction specialists, and none of them knew much about kratom, its risks, or how to treat kratom addiction. That's incredibly concerning. People who don't, people who want help can't get it. Kratom use leads to dependence, painful withdrawal, and serious side effects like seizures, liver toxicity, and heart issues, especially when users are unknowingly consuming high potency extracts. Children can buy kratom. A 14-year-old child could walk into a gas station and buy a bottle of kratom extract 500 times as strong as natural leaf and walk out, and there is no law against it. I'm not here calling for a total ban, but we do need strong safeguards, and I urge the council to consider the following protections. Restrict kratom sales to individuals over the age of 21 in the City of Mount Vernon. Require accurate labeling, dosage information, and third-party lab testing for all products, as the city can. Prohibit kratom sales near schools, parks, and youth centers. Ban the sale of kratom extracts and all high-concentration kratom products entirely, and require vendors to be licensed and subject to compliance checks. This is not about punishing responsible adults. It's about protecting public health and keeping our community safe from unregulated high potency products that even our healthcare system doesn't yet fully understand. Let's act now before this becomes a larger public health crisis. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Jason, could you repeat your last name for us again?
Hansey. H-A-N-S-E-Y.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure the clerk got that.
I do have a handout. Would I be able to?
You could leave that with the clerk there. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address city council tonight? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Ingrid. I am a new transplant here. I moved here six months ago, and I love Mount Vernon. I'm so happy to be here. It's a great community. I'm really excited about the, yeah, the choice to move in this direction. And I wanted to share one, one particular perspective I have as a new person, and I find often that new eyes can really be a helpful thing to hear from communities that have been, or folks that have been in the community for a long time. And that is, I would love to see better bike infrastructure around town. I ride my bike a lot, and I'm sure I don't need to preach to all of you the benefits of bicycling, but it's better for our bodies, it's better for our communities, it's better for climate, and it's frankly better for traffic, which has been a bit of an issue, especially around tulip time. And so, one particular suggestion I have for this community would be to have better bridge, specifically access across west Mount Vernon into Burlington. You know, the river is gorgeous, the community is so welcoming and lovely. I've met so many kind people here, and the downtown feels vibrant and full of local businesses. And it feels like that should just be the lively heart of Mount Vernon, and it just feels like a glaring absence that there's not a beautiful bike pedestrian bridge for all of us to get around, and including into Burlington, to access all of the businesses that, you know, we all need to live our lives. And I feel like to be able to access it by bike and by walking would really enhance the area that's already so lovely. I've traveled the world. I've lived in a lot of different places all over the West Coast, big and small cities and towns, and anytime there is an ease for biking and walking, it really enhances the community in terms of our ability to connect to each other and to really take care of ourselves and our bodies. And so, that's all I want to say. I would love to see better bike infrastructure, more lanes, and specifically the bridges, I think, would really enhance our ability to move around town. So, thank you all for the work that you do to keep Mount Vernon and this area lovely. It's really a pleasure to live here, and I think that would make it even more pleasurable. So, yeah, thanks for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ingrid. Welcome to Mount Vernon. And would you mind, there's a clipboard back there. I just want to make sure the clerk gets your contact info if you need that. Thank you.
Perfect.
Any other community comments this evening? Okay. Seeing then, we will go to item four. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes, checks, transfers, claims, and agreements. Would council like to move for adoption of the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second. Motion by Navora, second by Andrew. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item five is committee reports. Committee reports tonight. Council held its Parks and Finance Committee meeting tonight at 6 o'clock. Councilmember Beaton is reporting for the chairperson, Councilmember Molinar, who's out of town tonight.
Who owes me one?
He owes you one, yeah. Thank you, Melissa.
You bet. So, thank you, Mayor. So, first up, we heard from our finance director, Doug Bellesky, and our Parks Director, Jennifer Burner, on the Parks and Public Safety levy lid that we are, council is considering. The discussion continued about moving forward with this levy lid lift. The city would get this proposition onto the November 2025 ballot to enhance our park system and strengthen public safety services for all residents while providing relief to our general fund. The proposed levy would be in the amount of $4 million and would last for a six-year duration. It would be used for our Parks and Rec Department to sustain recreation, summer programs, increased critical, increase critical staff, three playground replacements, add a skate park to Bakerview, enlarge the BMX bike park that's used quite a bit, and improve park safety and amenities to increase positive community use of our parks. For the Police Department, the levy would be used to add six new police officers over the six-year term, including three new vehicles and equipment to support these critically needed positions. It would also include funding for nine new firefighter positions to help improve emergency response times and capability to the city's vulnerable population. Funding for these positions also incorporates a safer grant funding to maximize taxpayer investment. In addition to the improvements with parks and 15 new public safety positions, it would also provide 8.56 million in general fund relief to help support all critical services to the city. To submit a ballot measure to the voters, we must submit a resolution to the county auditor by August 5th, and so we'll be moving forward with that. Then we heard from the mayor's office, Steve Sexton, on the North County Public Defense Agreement, and you'll hear, that was what we just added to the agenda. You'll hear more about that later in the meeting. And then we received an update from Jennifer Burner on our Parks and Enrichment Services. Up at Little Mountain, park staff worked with the Department of Natural Resources to help open the view shed at the north lookout. Trees were really coming up there. It also enabled DNR to provide fire training experience to their staff, and the city benefits by having the view sheds restored. At Edgewater Park, we've restored two baseball play fields that were able to be used by local baseball clubs this past spring. Up at Hillcrest Park, the rec building is currently being renovated, and the renovation will be completed in August and will provide for additional space for recreational class offerings. Other happenings around our park, at Bonnie Ray Park, they hosted a volunteer work party in the spring that helped clean up the flower beds, and also hosted the first of several classes out of the large garage on the site, the plant propagation class. Under the Arts Commission, we have a free Chautauqua, which is a vaudeville show, performance at Edgewater Park on Saturday, June 28th, from 6 to 8, so come on out. And under our free summer youth programs, the supervised playground at Bakerview and Edgewater Park will start the week of July 7. Rec on the Go will start the week of July 7, and will travel to different apartment complexes around the city to provide recreation programming to youth that have a transportation barrier to participate in some of these programs. Fourth of July, Edgewater Park, come on out. We have our fireworks show. It starts at, well, fireworks at 10, but I think you can start showing up around 6 or 7, I think. There has been and will continue to be messaging about how to celebrate the Fourth safely. And just a reminder, fireworks in our great city, all fireworks are now illegal within city limits. And with that, we adjourned at 6:58.
Thanks, Melissa. I'm going to put you back on the spot now, because we need a Development Services Committee, and you chair that committee. Could you give us that report?
You betcha. So, we had a committee meeting last week, last Wednesday, on June 18. We heard about a number of building projects around the city. There's a 10-unit multi-story apartment complex going in on the corner of 21st and Stanford. It will also have an enclosed play area. Up at LaVenture, we have a three-story mixed-use building. It's called The Lofts. The second two floors of those will be rental apartments. We have the Glenmore Platte. Now, this is a big one, on 30th and Division. It will have, it's a 76-unit project, 40 single-family residents, and it also includes 36 multi, there's an apartment complex, 36 units. 12 of those will be in our in-program affordable units. You're going to see soon timber removal, and that might rattle some people, but some trees do have to come down in order for us to get some of these projects going. Then on Blackburn, we also discussed, there's two parcels, an 11-acre parcel and a 5-acre parcel. The 11 acres, right now, there's about 19 single-family homes planned. We heard about the 5-acre parcel, but there have been no submissions when I checked on the city's portal this morning. Businesses, there is a snack manufacturer that's interested in the old building behind modern cleaners. So, it's an old building that you don't generally see, but they're going to be doing some renovations soon, and so hopefully that'll come in. And then, there's a Ross Dress for Less that's coming to town. Then we rolled into the comp plan update. Our Citizens Advisory Committee and Planning Commission reviewed land use policies via a visioning exercise known as SWAT, which stands for Strengths, Weaknesses, Opportunities, and Threats. I lost my place here. So, it identified needs for our housing-focused policy. Staff is recommending that we do a shift, and Phase 1 of the comp plan will be due at the end of 2025, and it will focus on our land use, housing, economic development, zoning, middle housing, ADUs, and mixed use in RC2. So, hopefully we'll have that all wrapped up by the end of this year. Public outreach, in June, we're going to be traveling to, our Development Services Director will be at Mayor's Coffee Hour, Fourth of July Celebration, the chamber meetings. All this is going on between June and September. The Latinx Committee Meeting, Out of Community Action, and of course, at our Second Annual 3x3 Basketball Tournament. Kind of nice, isn't it? Second annual?
Second annual.
Phase 2 will be in 2026, and it will work, it'll focus on the development standards and the remaining plan elements. Our deliverables for our comp plan are due to commerce by June 30. We then reviewed a draft of an MOU with Welcome Homes Gadget and First United Methodist Church. They will be adding five pallet shelters onto their site. We had an agenda request for a proposal to review and possibly update our conditional use permit process, including early adoption, so maybe we can get that going and be done maybe in September or something. Then, under miscellaneous, we had a conversation about the senior center and site analysis, potential rezone for that property for residential affordable housing, but, you know, we do need clarification from the county on what, what is the county's ask of the city. Let's see. We had a request for presentation for Center for Inclusive Entrepreneurship. We discussed the West Side Bridge a little bit more, and then we said we recognized our permit tech, Danielle Freiberger, who is a wonderful young lady, and she is leaving the employment of the city. And with that, we adjourned at 7:26.
Thanks, Melissa. Great job. Item 5, the council member comments. Any council member comments this evening?
I've got one.
Yes.
Just want to remind everybody, this is new, but please be mindful, next Fourth of July, when you're celebrating that fireworks are illegal in the city and there's a hefty $1,000 fine, please know that we, you know, police and fire are really out there doing what they can, but I'm a realist, and let's face it, we're going to have fireworks in our city. They, we shouldn't. Most cities experience across the state that have no fireworks in their city, it still sounds like there's like not an ordinance. And so, just please be mindful, be a good neighbor, and attend our fireworks show instead of lighting off illegal fireworks in city limits.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary, any comments? Make sure I don't miss you. Okay, all right. We will move on to item 5C, the mayor's report, and there is just a little bit of a theme this evening. I'm going with one slide tonight. Just one underscore. What councilmember Beaton already said, because this is the last council meeting that we have before the Fourth of July. City Council passed a law last year making this the first year that fireworks of any kind, fireworks of any kind are illegal within the city limits of Mount Vernon. I again want to say, I actually like fireworks, and before you start the email that you're about to send me, I like the United States even more than fireworks. There is a time and a place for fireworks. It is not in the city limits of Mount Vernon. So, please stop lighting them off. Your, nobody, your neighbors don't like them, and no one likes them. So, take them outside of city limits. Look up, you can, I did a Google search today. You can actually, wherever you are, you can just say, hey, Google, or whatever search engine you use, are fireworks legal in the city of Burlington, Washington? They're not. Are they in this area of Skagit County? You can find out what times you can light off and what fireworks you can light off. Please do that. While you're there, check City of Mount Vernon. It will also reinforce what we've already stated. Take your fireworks outside of city limits and enjoy them, because if you light them off in city limits and we find you, or your neighbor catches you on video or something like that, fines of up to $1,000. $1,000 can probably buy you a lot of sparklers that you can use somewhere else in the county. That's your mayor's report for June 25th, 2025. Let's move on to new business. Under new business, item A, we have an update from PUD General Manager George Sado, and Steve Sexton will introduce this item. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Yeah, this evening, I'm going to be very brief. We have George Sado, the General Manager of Skagit PUD, here to give us an update on their projects and programs that they're currently undergoing. And I see you have a commissioner with you as well, Commissioner Lindquist. If he wants to, he can take a spot up here. He's more than welcome to, I suppose.
Commissioner Lindquist is also a former city council member, and we never let him forget it.
There you go, George. Thank you, Steve.
Hi, George.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. As Steve said, my name is George Sado. I'm the General Manager at Skagit PUD, and it's always my pleasure to come before the council every year and give you an update on our projects. So, I've got a number of projects to discuss, and feel free to ask questions while I'm going through. Don't need to wait till the end. Raise your hand and let me know whatever comes to your mind. So, to start off with, as Steve mentioned, we do have one of our commissioners in attendance. Joe Lindquist is one of our commissioners, and that is our complete board. As a reminder, we have three commissioners, each with the same district boundaries as county commissioners, and they each serve six-year terms. And I do like to point this out, that we have a strategic plan that our staff and our board aims to align our budget requests and capital improvement plan, and make sure that we reinforce our priorities when we think about what projects we're going to do and what is important to our customers as well. I will start off with our campus project. I've come before a council and talked about this many times, and I'm happy to say that we have been in our new building now for about two months. So, this was the, is the site plan for our property, the 16 acres that we have on Freeway Drive. The yellow-orange-ish rectangle in the top-left corner is where our new building is located. The light blue on the right is our existing building that fronts Freeway Drive. And so, we have our admin staff relocated from our existing building to the new building, because you can tell the square footage and the size of the rectangles are, don't quite match up. So, we still have our operations staff in the south part of our existing building, and that's where our yard is, the, the large, I don't know, mouse is going to work, yeah, down here. That's all our yard and our vehicles and our equipment are parked there, and we still have our operations staff occupy the south part of the building. The renderings to the right of the photo are the plan, and here's a daytime and nighttime photo, so they, it looks pretty much like the rendering, and it's, we've been in there two months, and we're still working out some kinks, but everything's going well. A couple of things to mention with this project, so I guess one, it's a good opportunity now to just thank the city for their partnership in opening up the fields. We were mentioning about Edgewater Park and improving those fields. These used to be playfields for the local community, and so having to, or having been able to open up these fields for development has allowed us to build that admin building, and it's gone great, and we appreciate the city's partnership in doing that. We are also looking at leasing the part of the building that we vacated. So, the northern part of that large blue rectangle that fronts Freeway Drive, so the northern part of this building, we are working with the Mount Vernon School District and are hoping that they could move into that building and occupy it for their admin, admin staff. So, that is still in the works, and nothing finalized yet, but we're making some progress. Questions on this?
Questions for George?
That's a question. Will the district, the community room, will that go with the district? Is that part of the agreement?
Yes, very good question. So, this, that square up there is what was the Aqua Room in our building, and that was available for free for nonprofit community members to come and use. And we have built a new facility in the new building that has even better technology, and it's laid out better, it's got more light. So, yes, we will, starting in July, that is going to be open for the community's use as well, just like the last one was.
That's great news.
Yeah, it is. We get a lot of inquiries and a lot of demand for that, that space, and the new space is, I think, once people realize that it's going to be even better to, to be there, well, it'll start being more in demand. It is available on our website to be able to reserve it. So, it's called the Aqua Room, and if you go on our website, you can find the part of the website where you can send an email and look at the calendar and arrange a reservation. But it's free for nonprofit. We don't, we don't reserve it for wedding receptions, or, you know, fundraisers or other kinds of things. Was there another question? Anyone else? No? Okay. One thing that we are particularly proud of is working with our local irrigators. So, as, I'm sure everybody's aware, water is a very scarce resource in Skagit County, and a lot of our irrigators use water directly from the Skagit River. They pump it directly from the river in order to irrigate their fields. They don't have senior water rights. This is a whole big discussion, which I can get into later if you prefer, but their water rights are interruptible. In the summer, when the in-stream flow, when the Skagit River drops below a certain level, those irrigators can't pump to irrigate their fields. The PUD has senior water rights, so we have the ability to pump from the river to serve our customers. What we have done in the past, and now we are doing on a more regular basis, is we are taking some of the water rights that we have, because we can curtail, curtail them a little bit and allow the irrigators to use them. So, we are temporarily and seasonally transferring the water rights to some specific irrigator so they can pump from the river. And we did it, we've done it during droughts, but now we've recognized the need in working with the irrigators that just because the state doesn't declare a drought, doesn't mean there isn't a lack of water for irrigation. And so now, we just do this on a seasonal basis. We did it last year. We're doing it again this year, so we have three specific areas where we are transferring water rights. They are in place right now, and they're using them right now, so that they can continue to irrigate. Ag is very important in Skagit County, and we are working with them in partnership to make sure that all of their crops can be successful. So, this is something we're proud of, and we're continuing to work on it. This graphic, oh, it shows up better on that screen, actually. So, these are the two districts in south Mount Vernon and on Fur Island. The little triangles are places where they pump from the Skagit River, and so those are places that we are able to transfer our water rights to, to allow them to pump. It's really worked well for them. It provides them water security when they need, when they need it for their crops. Moving on, we like to think of Skagit PUD as an innovative utility provider, and one of the innovative projects we've done recently is use some of the excess water pressure in our system to generate electricity. And we did that on one particular project about four years ago at the tank that we have on Division Street and Digby. There's a small building there that, where these photos were taken, where we have this in-pipe energy recovery valve. And so, instead of us taking high pressure and reducing the pressure and burning all that energy, we are able to capture it through a microturban. And so, we did this four years ago. We were able to capture that energy. We net meter it back into PSE's grid, and then that reduces our electric consumption at this site. So, at that specific, specific site, we save about $1,000 a month in our own electric costs. So, that was really successful. And we've taken that to another step, and we're working with Mount Vernon and doing a very similar project right near the high school. So, it, I'm sure a lot of people have seen it, but we- but we have a water reservoir right up near the high school. It's called our Ninth and Highland Tank. And we do the same thing there. We have high pressure that reaches that tank, and we reduce it. We reduce the pressure in order to serve customers. And so we are also, have completed installing an energy recovery valve there as well. This one is very innovative because we're working directly with the school district. PSC has partnered with us and allowed, is going to allow the school district to use the excess electricity that we're generating. So we have a very small demand at this site. The power generated will first cover our needs, but then the rest of the energy will be transferred over to the Mount Vernon School District to be able to use at the school. They have 14 electric meters at the school. They consume a lot of energy. This excess energy won't satisfy all of their needs, but they should be able to save about $26,000 a year in energy costs by just using this valve. The energy is there in the water system, and it would just be dissipated if we did it the way we have in years past, and this allows that energy to be recovered. So the, I've got a couple of photos. This is up there right now. So if you drive by the site, you'll see this large gray box. It is generating electricity, and we're just waiting to finish the paperwork with the school district for them to take, they're going to pay our bill on our water meter, so we just have to, or on our electric meter. So they're just going to finish the paperwork for that, and then PSC will sign off, and then we'll be able to transfer the excess energy.
That's pretty cool.
It is a very cool project. On our last one, we, you know, this, these were articles that were published nationwide. We were on television programs. We did a YouTube video. We did a whole bunch of stuff, and you're going to see a lot of promotion on this one as well. This company is trying to get this product in more markets. And so Mount Vernon will be featured, again, in a lot of promotional materials regarding this. And especially because it partners with the school district. So I think there's another angle there that's, that's going to be really helpful.
Any questions on that, Council?
George, if things don't work out with the school district, my house is a block from that site.
Ah.
I don't think that's a conflict.
Okay.
$26,000.
Kevin, is he shaking? Or is he nodding or shaking? He's shaking his head. Okay. And one piece of this, and a very important piece, is that we were able to get this, this project fully funded. So the PUD is not contributing any funds to this. There are clean energy grants. The Inflation Reduction Act gave us a grant. TransAlta owns a coal mine in Centralia. And so, you know, they're getting out of the coal business, and so they have money to put towards projects, and we were lucky enough to receive some grants. So we are going to cross our fingers that the Inflation Reduction Act follows through and nothing gets cut off this year. We should come out of this without having to spend anything, which is a big bonus. Not just for us, but for our community as well. And then I also like to talk about what projects we're working on in the city. So we have some pipeline projects. This one, not the greatest graphic, but this is College Way. And there's a bright yellow line that goes across the page, and this shows our water system. But we are replacing a pipeline on College Way roughly from just west, west of Continental, almost up to La Venture. Everybody's probably noticed the single lane traffic along the curb, along College. The project's almost done. We had a contractor working on this. Our crews do the connections to our existing system, and we just have a few of those left to clean up over the next few weeks. So it should be very close to being done. And again, we partnered with the city, and, you know, our partnership has worked well in this one as well to try and pick a good location for that trench to not disrupt traffic more than we needed to. Another project that you're going to see start fairly soon is up at the east end of Division Street, just past the elementary school. There's a little bottleneck in our system. I highlighted in yellow here. We have to upsize that. It's, it's not the best sightlines. I even just drove this recently. So flagging is going to be important, and it's just important to keep your speed down in this area, I guess, when we're there. It shouldn't take too long, but that's coming up fairly soon. And then this is a project that we're under design right now up in the Hillcrest neighborhood. It will be constructed next year. And so all of the yellow highlighted streets are where we're going to replace pipe. So this is quite a large project. It's in a neighborhood, so it's going to have a lot of impact. And, you know, we'll message it, and everybody will be aware of it. But one reason I wanted to bring it up, too, is talking about our innovative staff that we have. This is the first project that we used a drone to do a survey. So instead of sending our surveyor out to take a lot of time to survey, pick up points on the ground, all of your paint marks, all of the surface features, everything by hand, we have a drone that we purchased that has a camera on it that's over to the right, and it is able to capture, using LiDAR, it can capture everything that we have. It picks up trees. It picks up all of the utility locate marks. It saved us, we already finished the survey. It didn't take very long, and it saved us a tremendous amount of time. And we're hoping, this is the first project we used it on, and we hope to use it on many other projects as well. So this is a really cool thing that we're doing, and I just wanted to point it out because our staff did all the research. We purchased it, and yes, it works. You know, it's worked, so. That is the last slide I have, unless there's any questions. I'd be happy to answer questions about something I talked about or even something else.
Councilmember Vanderstue.
Hey, thank you so much for coming today. Fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
When you are doing projects, so that's in my neighborhood. I'm getting a lot of questions about it in the Hillcrest area.
Okay.
I would love to know where to find start dates, end dates, scopes. That way, when I have a neighbor asking me, I have something to tell them.
Yes.
But then also, for our city staff, those roads are fairly new. And so coordinating in the future to be able to replace pipes in maybe areas, I understand that this is not super important to you, probably, but replacing pipes in areas where the asphalt is degraded already would be amazing. Then we can do a one-two punch, and then we don't have big dips.
I agree with both of your comments. Yeah, we try to coordinate as, as much as we can. That is important to us. We understand that residents don't know the difference between, you know, a road job and a sewer job and a water job. It's all utility work. And so we try and partner. I can't give you specifics on exactly why the timing didn't work out on this one. It's unfortunate. But yes, we do try and keep that as a priority. And this project is, you know, we did the survey. Construction won't be till early next year. So you will, residents will be getting notifications, and our website is usually updated with that information as well. So as we get closer, there'll be places to, to get that information, and I'll make sure that we let you know about it as well.
Fantastic. I got one follow-up.
Good.
Yep. And this is not a fun one for you. When are you going to look at doing electricity as well?
That could be a whole other conversation. So back in 2007, that issue was brought up locally, and it went to a vote for the county. So statewide, there were three counties. PUDs have electric authority. So they have the authority to, to provide electric services. So in 2007, Skagit County, Island County, and Jefferson County all went to a vote of the public for the PUDs to take over the electric systems. And it passed in Jefferson County, and it failed in Skagit and Island Counties. So in order for us to do that, it has to go back to another vote.
I'm so sorry. She was walking up to me.
That's okay.
Okay, 2007 vote failed.
Yes.
And we have to go back to another vote.
That's, that's the way that we, the only way that we can then get electric authority. And in, a lot of information, but Jefferson County basically had to buy the electric infrastructure in Jefferson County from PSC. I think back, when they finally did it, it cost them over $100 million. So the, you know, the electric infrastructure was already there. PSC is a private company, but you could say that it was all already there, serving the public, owned by the public, but they had to repurchase it. So it was a, that was a big price tag to buy that electric infrastructure in Jefferson County. The same thing would have to happen here. You know, if the vote passed, we'd have to raise a lot of money to buy PSC's infrastructure. And I think here it would cost more. They have dams, let alone just lines and poles and those kinds of things. So it's not something we, we can pursue. It's got to come up on a ballot, and it's got to get voted.
I would love to talk about it more. It's a passion of mine. I love the idea of public power. I think it's a super fun idea, just for the public. Of the 28 counties that have PUDs, 24 of them provide electricity. I would love to be the 25th one. And there's a lot of positives behind it, but I understand that it would be very expensive.
Yeah. And again, I don't know if I articulated it, but it's not something that internally we can go out and push and, and market and lobby for. It's, it's got to come to us. It's got to be a community-based ballot measure.
Beautiful. Thank you so much for your time.
If you want some information about the history, I can provide that to you, just so you have some perspective on 2007, even just what we've done in the past.
That'd be fantastic.
There is some history with that.
Right now, I'm starting off my history with the, with the Tennessee Valley Authority. And that was, you know, almost 100 years ago, so maybe I should update it a little bit.
Our last history with this is 2007. Before that, it was 1952. So yeah, there's a big gap.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Yeah. Richard?
Just a, kind of a procedural question. When you're in neighborhoods and have to do utility work, and then generally temporarily cover up the trenches, and then I'm guessing at some later date, when most of the work is done, you come back and finalize that cover, the pavement. I'm guessing that's the procedure. But I'm asking because in this neighborhood, just to the north of this map, there was quite a bit of work done this summer. And there's still quite a bit of, and this happened in the last week or two. I haven't been looking lately, but it seems like the rough patches lingered for a long period of time. What's your kind of procedure and timeline for trying to cover those?
That's a good question, because it is important for everybody to understand. So when we respond to leaks or breaks, where we have to open up an asphalt patch or even do pipeline work, you're correct. We come in with a temporary patch that usually isn't even. It's enough to just cover the trench. We try and make it as smooth as possible, make it drivable, but it settles. It's not hot mix. And what we end up doing in the summer, we try and bundle up a lot of these projects and have a contractor go and tackle them all at once. It's inefficient for us to do these small projects. We don't have a lot of staff to do it. We don't have the equipment. And so unfortunately, we wait for a few of them to stack up. We go to a contractor, and then they knock it out in like a week or... So some of them do linger because of that. We're just waiting for the bid package to be put together.
All right. So I guess if people have concerns about that, they can call you, not the city.
That's correct. If it's one of ours.
If it's one of yours, which is hard to know the difference sometimes.
It is.
I get that. But there are quite a few areas that were torn up, and so I appreciate you just sort of staying on those.
Yeah. I, a lot of people notice that it gets uneven on the temporary patch, and they think that it's final. So, yeah, you know, if you guys get called, people know, when we get calls for each other, when we know it's the other utilities work, then, you know, we're happy to, to explain that, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming, and thanks to Joe for, for coming. You know, I really want to commend you for the partnerships that you have with the school district and with the farmers. They're both really struggling, and I just think it's, what you're doing is just a great job.
Yeah, thank you for that. We're, we're really proud of those. There, we try to think of everything that we do with a community focus. And we know that even though those things don't have to happen, that it's better for everybody, so we try and make them work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hudson, any questions?
Nope. I'm sorry, can't be there to see you, George. I'll catch you next time and email you if I have anything come up.
Sounds good.
All right. Thanks for being here tonight, George.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
All right. Item B tonight is a substantial amendment to the city's 2024 CDBG annual action plan, and Special Projects Manager Steve Sexton will present this item. Steve?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Yeah, this evening we have a public hearing concerning a substantial amendment to the 2024 CDBG annual action plan. The driving force behind this is the fact that in 2024, the city awarded Friendship House $50,000, or excuse me, Skagit Habitat for Humanity $50,000, which they are unable to expend. They don't have any projects in Mount Vernon coming up in the near future. So approval of this amendment will maintain Mount Vernon's compliance with CDBG guidelines. As per regulations, the city cannot have 1.5 times their annual CDBG grant allocation unexpended at the end of, or at May 2nd of each year. And the reason this is, we proposed that the, the suggestion from our consultant was to pay down Section 108 loan is when we look at our 2024 awards, we were at maxed out on the service piece. It's that 15% limitation. And also, there were two other projects on there which were, one was fully funded, and that was the Family Promise Blessing House remodel. It was fully funded at $25,000. And the other project was the Neighbors in Need Food Bank. And they have requested $60,000 and, excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong one here. $65,000, and they were awarded $31,000 for their window replacement project. I've been working with them, and they're going to come in a little bit lower than that already. So this made sense, we thought, to make it fiscally responsible to help pay down that balance with these dollars if possible. So it is a public hearing, so.
Questions for Steve before the public hearing?
I might as well jump in.
Okay.
So I, I'm, maybe I didn't find it in the material, but the amended action plan, or the amendment to the action plan, is not attached. So the briefing paper has the note that we're reallocating $50,000, but it doesn't say to and what the kind of analysis was that she just verbally shared. So I guess I'm kind of flat-footed hearing the proposal and not really knowing what the full set of options are and what that, what, what we would do about it. So, I mean, I guess I'd be inclined to, after the public hearing, to table decision until we get more understanding of that, what, what the options are. Because that's, that's all the information I have, is that verbal briefing.
Okay. And is there anything beyond what you stated that we could do with this funding?
Not that I'm aware of, no. And the timing of it, too, is, is a timeline.
Because we can't, we can't use it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I apologize if we did not get the annual action plan. I thought I had it attached. I thought everybody's.
It just probably grabbed the wrong file or the one without the attachment on it. But I heard you say that the 15% is our cap on services, so we can't spend more than that. That's, I get that. And then there's also 20% of the CDBG, which is set aside for administration because it's a federal program. It takes a lot to administer it, unfortunately. So, and we, we're already maxed on that. So the rest would be all the sort of capital projects that come in the door and the loan payment, repayments. Those would be the two options.
Correct. You're correct.
Yeah, so I'm familiar with that much of the program.
That's well stated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we are ready to, you know, we should have a public hearing, of course. But I don't know. It feels like that's a kind of a meaty topic to me.
Okay. Any other questions before we open the public hearing, online or in person? Okay. With that, we will open up the public hearing Okay, with that, we will open up the public hearing for the proposed substantial amendment to the city's twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five CDBG annual action plan. You are here to speak on that item. Come on up to the podium. And since no one is, I am going to close the open record public hearing. And Steve, do we have a, a recommendation then for council?
Yeah, we, we do. And I, I'd also comment that we had advertised for a comment period and we received no public comment on it either. So, yeah, so the council will be aware of that. So again, the recommendation is approval of the amendment um to keep us in line with their, with their guidelines and utilize these dollars as we best can at this point, unfortunately.
Maybe a, a follow-up question?
Sure.
Um, if we, so uh, you know, I'm familiar with certain types of loans, but I can't tell you the codes of federal regulation for CDBG. But um if, and uh I guess we're paying off a, is a Section one oh eight loan?
Paying down.
Or paying down, excuse me, for the library.
Yep.
Right? And so with this, if we um reallocated this fifty thousand to the library's loan, um would it pay solely on the principal or would it pay on the interest? Does it uh save us time? Does it pay off the loan sooner?
I believe it pays down forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-some dollars uh principal. Amount.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
And, and the rest would be interest.
My good friend Doug Velasquez here would, could probably comment.
Fifty thousand principal. Would it save us money on interest if we pay it off? Cause we'd be paying it off sooner.
Yeah.
There, yes. So it's, that's the value to the city.
Correct, sure.
Yeah.
And the only other part of the puzzle would be if there are other interests that, you know, are part of the CDBG action plan that um could utilize the money for something sooner.
And that's where we looked first. Like what could we do in our, in our action plan? What organizations are outside of that fifteen percent services, cause that's maxed, um that could actually spend this in the short amount of time that we have, and we couldn't find one.
You did, you did that due diligence. Okay, I think you've answered my questions.
Okay, any other questions?
Just because we're talking about it, do you know what the interest rate is?
It is, it, this, I will, I'm glad Doug is here.
She's got it.
Ver- variable rate loan, which is.
Oh, yes, awful. Oh, let's pay it off. Great. Cool.
Step on up.
You can't hide, Doug.
Twice now. So when, when we got this loan, um what the interest rate says they were, it was um, they put it in as a variable rate and, and they're waiting for the, the uh rates to drop enough where then they can lock it in. So at this point, we haven't reached that spot yet, so it is still a variable rate.
Oh, okay. So I'm just gonna assume that that means that it's high and that we should pay it off quickly. Great. Full support. Are you looking for a motion?
I am.
Um, I am so moved.
Second. That was a tie. Uh, a motion by Andrew, second by Nabour. Uh, more discussion, questions?
No, thank you.
Good, ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion passes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Item C is a resolution for the sale surplus of vehicles and equipment. Public Works Director Chris Phillips has this one. Chris?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. City staff recommend city council approve a resolution declaring equipment surplus to the city needs and authorizing the sale of these at auction or disposal as scrap. Staff has determined that certain vehicles, equipment, computers, and accessories are either no longer usable or are surplus to the needs of any city department. Staff recommends the council approve this resolution, authorizing the surplus of city vehicles, equipment, computers, and accessories to be sold at auction or disposed as scrap, pending your questions.
Questions for Chris or a motion for Resolution ten seventy-three?
Um, we couldn't find another use for the nineteen ninety-five Astro Van in the city?
I would love to sit down and brainstorm with you on that.
Okay.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that council approve Resolution ten seventy-three.
Second.
Motion by Melissa, second by Andrew. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item D is an amendment to the twenty-twenty-five salary schedule. Chris?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Uh, staff uh recommend city council approve ordinance thirty-nine fourteen, amending the twenty-twenty-five non-represented salary schedule. Uh, the current employee is classified as a sen- senior engineering tech at range twenty-seven, following a thorough review of the incumbent's evolving duties and responsibilities within the Public Works Department. It's been determined that the best interest of both the city uh, or the department and the city is to reclassify the incumbent position to a capital project engineer, which would be a range thirty. Um, the salary difference for this reclassification would assume a mixture of funding from the transportation benefit district funds, wastewater enterprise, surface water enterprise funding, so no impact to general fund. Um, and the overall cost here is approximately two hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents monthly throughout the, from July basically to the end of the year. If you're wondering what, who this is, this is Dean. So if you remember, just a few months ago, I came to you about a project that he was managing where he saved the city over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, I think the twenty-nine, or two hundred and ninety-one sixty-seven is a good deal for, for his expertise. Uh, staff recommend city council approve ordinance thirty-nine fourteen, amending the twenty-twenty uh five uh non-represented salary schedule, uh pending your questions.
Questions for Chris?
And before you vote, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Erin for walking me through that particular process, so really appreciate her help.
Um, I would make a motion to approve ordinance three nine one four.
Second.
Motion by Andrew, second by Richard. More discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Alright, we are on to item E. It's a resolution for the city's transportation improvements program and capital projects manager Frank Ryan are here. Hi, Frank.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm here one last time uh to talk about the twenty-six thirty-one uh Transportation Improvement Program update that we've been working on through the past few months. Um, staff is recommending city council approve Resolution ten seventy-four to adopt the twenty-six twenty thirty-one uh six-year transportation improvement program. And then I'll stop talking about uh tips until, well, six months from now. Um, in general, we received no public comments uh related to the adoption of the tip. However, we did receive uh four uh projects and/or project concepts from city council and/or the mayor uh that didn't make it into this year's tip, so I just wanted to quickly acknowledge those four um and indicate uh what our plan is for those. The first one was uh brought up by council member Beaton at the last meeting. This was Urban Avenue, uh needed transportation or needed pedestrian and bicycle improvements on that street. It didn't make it into this tip. It will make it into the next one. Um, second one is uh essentially looking at, or reevaluating uh our relative priorities related to the Broad Street realignment. Um, I would say that that project, as it was originally scoped, hasn't aged very well, so it really does need a more careful look in terms of how to realign that street uh to be safer and also to meet the current expectations of non-mo- or multi-motorized uh transportation, because the previous project, as it was scoped, i- it's not aged well. So that will be a priori, or something that I will do as part of the twenty-seven thirty-two uh tip update process. The third one is uh looking at another old project that um has struggled to gain traction in the city. This is the Thirtieth Street Pedestrian Bicycleist Improvements, uh a section of improvements on Thirtieth Street between uh First Street to Manitow. Um, this one actually has a structural flaw to it, an underlying structural flaw, and that is that section of Thirtieth Street is not federally classified. So Thirtieth Street from uh College Way South to First, uh, or Thirtieth Street, College Way to Fur is classified, federally classified as a collector's street. So it can easily, relatively speaking, uh secure state and federal funding, grant funding for that. South of First Street, it is not recognized. It is a local residential street, which means all of a sudden it has a hard time gaining traction. And so that's one of the, the catches to that. The other catch to it is um I am reevaluating in general uh for the twenty-seven thirty-two um looking at projects in which pavement preservation was kind of attached on to those projects. When you look at grant programs today, uh what that results in is a project that is somewhat too expensive for the uh, for the sorts of grant programs that do sidewalk and bicycle improvements or support those, but not quite complete enough to qualify for complete streets grants. So it ends up dropping our projects kind of in a nebulous um middle space in between. That's something that I will look at fixing in the twenty-seven thirty-two. And in doing that and in looking at getting a classification upgrade for this section of street, this is, this will be an opportunity to at least give this one a little more traction for us. And last but not least, this is one that actually came to me when I very first started at the city and unfortunately had not yet kind of settled into the transportation aspects of the city and whatnot. And this is uh pedestrian bicyclist improvements uh associated with Ti- South Tenth Street, Fowler Street, um essentially the, the kind of loop around the north and west side of Hills, Hillcrest Park down to uh, uh, yeah. Down to Blackburn. Um, sorry, geography escaped me there. Um, so this was suggested to me fairly early on. It unfortunately didn't stay with, with me over the course of getting settled in, so it didn't make it into the tip this year, uh but I'll make sure that it gets looked at next year. So those were the uh comments. Those were the, kind of the three, we still have work ahead of us type of thing. Uh, and with that, I'll take any questions that you might have on this final tip adoption.
Questions for Frank?
I don't have any questions. Sorry, Richard. Um, I just wanted to say thank you. I know you have spent a lot of time uh in, in effort into this, and so thank you.
Thank you.
Same, uh same. It's just um, I, you know, each, each year the, you know, the program, you know, matures and you've taken it to a new level, and I think there's a lot of improvements in here that are very appreciated. Um, one of the ones that I want to call out um is just the kind of move to um identify, you know, new projects and in particular pedestrian bicycle improvement projects, um which was spoken to by uh one of our constituents, our new constituents earlier tonight. And it's been spoken to by the preponderance of people um involved in our comprehensive planning, how important it is that we invest in um active transportation, which is bicycles and pedestrians uh walkways. So, and we, you, you're kind of in a, uh, we, as a city, are in an awkward place because we have an old plan right now for, for bikes, um and we are on the verge of developing a new plan. Um, and so we don't have the benefit of that comprehensive assessment yet, but yet we're still putting these projects forward. So by my count, there's about eleven new projects in the tip for twenty twenty-five, and nine of those eleven projects are in pedestrian bicycle improvement projects. Um, so uh, uh, that's, that's a great sign, and I hope a direction we continue to go as a city. Um, I have one question on that, and that is um the Cleveland Street West Broadway Crosswalk Improvements. These would be the um crosswalks in the middle of the block and on the corner of the block by City Hall uh down town. Um, and so, you know, in past years, we, I've, I've asked some questions about why we're investing in certain uh ADA projects. I think this one is mostly an ADA walkway um issue. And I, I know some citizens have asked, well, why are you investing in repaving and redoing sidewalks when they look perfectly functional? And they may look perfectly functional to many people, but many times our sidewalks and our ramps are not compliant. They're not supportive of folks with disabilities getting in and out of different areas. But at the same time, there are a lot of other uh parts of the city where there's no infrastructure at all. And so balancing when you put, and these are all, every project is expensive. Get into government or anything, if you do something, it costs money to do it. So it's important to make a decision about where you invest and where you don't, I guess, because there are a lot of places that don't have any facilities right now. So when do we balance putting money into something that's there and just not compliant in a little way? And I guess I'd ask you to characterize um where the Cleveland Street uh West Broadway Crosswalk Improvement project sort of came from, what its uh purpose is. Is, I guess I'm, that's, that's one of the ones, like the South Fifteenth Street Sidewalk Improvement Projects, that we did the curb ramps last year, and we're going to finish the sidewalks this year. And these are hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, are they being put in the right place?
So uh, as far as uh South Fifteenth Street is concerned, um I, that, that's the, a legacy that I'm kind of putting away at this point in time.
And, and fifteen, not to interrupt, I'm sorry, but Fifteenth Street's really important in, in the way it was described to me because it is around the hospital.
It is.
And it's an important area for, for many reasons. Um, but we are where we are. Fifteen's almost done, and um we're going to get it done.
So to answer your, your question, a couple, a couple of things uh led to that one ending up on the tip. Um, the first was uh, we have not, uh, outside of the context of ADA improvements associated specifically with our overlay program, we haven't really started doing ADA improvements kind of above and beyond. What we're going to find when we finish our uh ADA transition plan is there's a bit of a horror show um to be had on that one. Um, there's going to be a lot of ramps on there, uh and we can no longer chain it to completely just to the overlay program. We'll have to start adding uh ADA improvement projects above and beyond that.
Right, there's no nexus between the overlay and that ramp.
None at all. Um, and that was actually, part of my goal was to introduce a project that had no nexus connection to the overlay project to start to tee up that conversation. What you see in the tip is I tried to add at least, e- even stuff that was kind of, I didn't want to really push hard. I wanted to add at least one type of project of that category. So that was the ADA Improvement Project. The reason I picked that location was primarily because of the ADA improvements that we did as part of the overlay project this past year, where we did the downtown uh ADA pedestrian ramps there. And then as you started to look, continue downtown, especially when the, the, our summer festival occurred and that, you know, all the people that were walking further south there. Um, my thought was I can justify extending the effect of ADA improvement in our downtown area a couple of blocks to the south, particularly because of where City Hall is located and providing that ADA uh improvement that connects the parking lot and as well as the streetside parking to City Hall. It was more, mostly a case of that's, it was a, a convenient example where lacking the ADA transition plan and any kind of uh prioritization scheme, I could build on the sort of ADA improvements that we sort of initiated for ourselves in the downtown area. So that's, that's essentially the answer to the question of how that project came to be and why I made sure that it was programmed in, just so that uh when people start asking the question, are you Mount Vernon? How are you starting to keep up with your ADA uh transition compliance? I want to be able to point at more than just, yeah, we do it whenever we, we figure we overlay a street that happens to have that, especially since as we move forward, what we're going to find is what is a priority for pavement preservation, especially overlay pavement preservation, is not going to connect to what's a priority for ADA improvement.
Thank you for that background. I, I wouldn't have guessed, so it's, it's just so you know you're thinking that far ahead and that that's a new problem that's coming in our direction. Appreciate that. I see that funds aren't scheduled till twenty twenty-seven um for that project, and you know, we'll, we're going to have a lot more information on bicycle pathways and other things and ADA. So uh, suppose you on council next year, maybe you could take a look at all those competing balance, you know, the balance of all those com- competing interests. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Other questions on that? Thank you for picking a location where literally tens of thousands of people were just at a month ago. Um, that'll serve us well. Do we need a public hearing for this?
Uh, we have already held a public hearing two weeks ago for the tip, so at this point in time, councils will link to adopt. I'll stop talking about the twenty-six thirty-one dip.
Alright, it's Resolution ten seventy-four if anyone's interested.
I'll make a motion, Council, approve Resolution ten seventy-four.
Second.
Motion by Melissa, second by Richard. More discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Item F is in agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation. Frank has. Item F is in agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation. Frank has this one.
So the, the next two items are essentially uh two different projects' version of the same thing. So I'll do most of my talking on this one. Um so staff is recommending authorizing the mayor to execute supplement number one to the local agency agreement with WashDOT for the Riverside Drive Improvements One Project. What we are doing here is amending the grant agreement to reallocate a small portion of the federal funds to uh agency use, as in agency as in us, city use. Currently under the agreement, all the local funds are tasked to consultant. The reason why we're seeking this is unfortunately, again, seeing a problem ahead on trying to come up with a, a patch for the problem is that we're still working on developing the consultant agreements uh with our preferred consultant for getting that design back up and running. Um those agreements for the reasons I kind of briefly touched on during the committee meeting two weeks ago uh include the changes in how fees are calculated, the, the greater expense involved. Um I just, I'm going through and making certain that the, the, the cost estimates and the scope estimates are correct for what we are needing from them. In the meantime, though, the grants, uh both federal grants have a stipulation in them that essentially says that if you don't build a grant for several months, then uh they, WashDOT can basically uh recommend that the grant be rendered inactive. And right now, everybody is fairly enthusiastic about defunding these federal grants that go inactive. So I see that creeping up on us. So what I'm doing is uh proposing a supplement that will free up uh some of that money and reallocate it to uh city use and then be able to invoice for some of my time that I'm accruing uh doing these negotiations. We cannot invoice the time that our consultant is participating in the negotiations because they're not currently under contract with us. Um but that will buy us time to continue this process with them uh without having the WashDOT local programs kind of hanging over our shoulders saying, look, if you don't get uh invoice into us soon, we're going to have to pull this funding. So that's kind of the, the nature of actually both of these asks. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Frank? But a motion for the first agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Navour and a second by Andrew, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item G, the second agreement?
Yes. Uh staff recommends authorizing the mayor to execute supplement number three to the local agency agreement with WashDOT for the Riverside Drive Improvements Number Two Project. Same thing, different project.
So moved.
Second.
Same motion, different second. No. Um motion by Andrew, second by Navour. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Frank, thank you.
Frank, wonderful job with all this.
Yeah.
I mean, you really know your stuff and you're so thorough and, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item H is a closed record hearing for a concurrency deferral. Senior Planner Mary Ann Manville is here. Hi, Mary Ann.
Hi, good evening, Council, Mayor. Let's see if I can find a, there it is. Okay, so tonight we have uh in front of you a request for a um deferral of infrastructure improvements. And um says a deferral on McLaughlin Road Infrastructure Improvements for a two lot short plat. And this action would allow improvements to be deferred until each of the lots applies for a development permit. And the, the hearing examiner recommends that after holding a closed record hearing, council make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the accompanying resolution approving the McLaughlin Road Infrastructure Improvements until each short, each lot of the short plat applies for development permits. And um it's kind of an unusual thing, this is the first one of these I've ever done. And, you know, I've been here for a long time, so. And I, I talked to staff and nobody else could remember ever having done a deferral. Now, we have come to you a number of times for waivers, where we've asked that the improvements actually be waived and we, and they never get done. But in this case, we're asking just for a, a deferral to allow the, the improvements to be done instead of being done with the two lot short plat for that, them to come in when they actually come in for development permits. And I have a, a picture here that shows the location of that, the site. You can see that it's on the very far eastern side of the, of the city. The county is on the north side of McLaughlin Road. County is on the east side of the project and county is on the south side. And as you can, you can see in the aerial um photo that is next to that, the, the location, it's farmland all around, all around this. And you can see McLaughlin Road is on the north side of the property and you can see on the aerial where it, it, where it um, where it kind of goes off to here, there's a little farmhouse right here. This, it's dirt. Once you hit, once you hit like about here, it's a dirt driveway into, into a, to a, to a farm, a farm uh home. So you will, it, it's not going to be extended and connected to anything. This is, this is it. And this is, this is a, the, a copy of the short plat. And I put this on here so that you could see the, one of the things that uh, you, you can see all of the, the critical areas that are, that are on here. And this, this didn't, doesn't show up very well, but this whole section here and this whole section here are all, are all critical areas. So just the background on this, some of you will remember in twenty twenty that would, that we, we did a comprehensive plan designation change on this property. And the eastern portion of it, we changed um from uh public to uh, to residential. And when you do the comp plan amendments, then we require a rezone to make the comp plan and the, and the, the re, the zoning to be consistent with one another. And in, the city does not do uh rezones that create split zoned properties. And so in order for the, for the, for us to complete the, the zoning portion of this, we had to do, the, the applicant had to do a subdivision of it along the, along the comprehensive plan designation line so that when we do the rezone, each of the pieces gets, is consistent with what, with the, uh, with each other. Right now, the applicant has no specific development plan for the eastern portion of the property. So it's difficult to in, install infrastructure improvement with no associated development proposal. What could happen is they could put in all this infrastructure and it, then it doesn't work out for what they, what they propose. And then all that newly installed infrastructure would need to be removed and replaced and, 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 and that is undesirable, obviously, for the applicant and it's also undesirable for the city. So that puts the applicant in a catch twenty-two position. They have to complete the subdivision to get the rezone done to be consistent with the comp plan. But then they have to complete the subdivision and infrastructure is part of that, that. And then they have this infrastructure for an unknown development. That puts us in a, a rough place. And then on top of all of that, as I showed you, the property is encumbered significantly by critical areas and the mitigation for that has to be approved by, in this case, both the Corps of Engineers and ecology because they have some wetlands on there that are waters of the US and some that are not. So it's not, at this point, it's not feasible to prepare a development plan un- until the agencies get completed with their work and they know what mitigation they're going to accept and, and what they actually have to, the, the property they actually have to develop on it. So as I told you, McLaughlin Road is located really on the easternmost edge of the city. It's not going to be extended, utilities are not going to be extended. It's, because the stuff that, like I showed you, the east is all Skagit County farmland. That's where we know that's not ever going to be part of the city. So um we have approved the preliminary short plat and we did have a condition on it that it is subject to this uh deferral being um approved. And if the deferral is not approved, then of course they'll have to put um the infrastructure in just like they would for any, any um subdivision. Our municipal code includes a provisions for either waivers or deferrals of improvements for subdivisions with the recommendation from the hearing examiner and city council approval. And um the, the other section of the, the municipal code has the actual procedures that we have to follow to do that. And so we use both sections of that. The hearing examiner did hold a hearing on May fourteenth and on May twenty ninth issued his recommendation for approval. So the applicant has satisfied the deferral criteria outlined in the code and it has completed all of the procedural requirements for infrastr- infrastructure deferral. They have also completed the procedural steps necessary for nor, for the normal traffic concurrency. And the traffic concurrency review does include the improvements that are being in, that are being deferred so that when they come in for development permits, we, we know what the improvements are that they're required to do. We, um, the, the resolution that was in your packet complies with the, the municipal code and the project has completed the required public processes up to this closed record public hearing. And the hearing examiner has recommended approval of the request. And the, the, just that, that uh recommendation is included as an attachment to your council packet. That's what I have for you. So if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions for Mary Ann?
Yeah, Andrew. Um I see that part of it's uh remaining publicly owned or the zoning is public. Um is there a reason why?
So the, yes, there is. The, the, that, that portion of the property there is up there. We, we do have a, a, a proposal in. And the, the proposal is for a, a church. Churches are, churches are allowed, are allowed use in the public zone. And in fact, when, when we get churches in other zones, one of the things we ask them to do is to come in and to, and to redesignate to uh, to public. It's in the, it's in the, it's in our municipal code. And um so uh th- they, that, that's why that is, that, that's why they, they kept that section as, as public so that they could put the, put the church on there. It's my understanding and they, the, the applicant had testified at the, the public hearing that the, that, that, that property, that, that, which is lot one of that short plat is going to be donated to the, to the church. And that's another part of the reason for, for, for making all this happen because they can't do the improvements until they own the property. Can't own the property till the subdivision's done.
That makes a ton of sense. Um do publicly zoned lands uh still pay property tax until they're developed?
I don't, I don't know. You know?
We don't own it.
We don't own it.
Somebody, the developer owns it. They're a, a private enterprise. They're paying property tax, even though it's publicly zoned.
Yeah, I, about tax lawyers, I don't know if churches are exactly.
They are. But I'm wondering if it's currently being taxed or not. I'm trying to find it on the stupid map, but it won't let me. It's, I'm sorry. Um I don't care. Uh seems like a great thing. I love.
We can, we can, we, uh, we can take a look at that and I can, I can, I can get you, I can find that information out for you and, and let you know.
So itty bitty tiny thing, it probably doesn't matter. Um if we have a bunch of publicly owned property that isn't being developed and is publicly owned, rather not have it publicly owned.
It's a difference, this is a difference between publicly owned and publicly zoned.
Yes.
Zone, because there's lots of, for example, you know, the, the, the RV park that, that we, we all are, are, are well aware of, that is publicly zoned as, as well, but it is clearly not publicly owned.
Okay. I will do a little bit more research here in a little bit. Thank you so much. Um love what you did here. Um are you looking for a motion? Because I would move.
We'll do a, we'll do a hearing first, I think. Um but any other questions before we do that? This was a, like a long process, an involved process.
It wasn't. And, and just to let you know, the, the, the reason that it was sold, so, part of the reason it was, was so long is because of all of the critical areas that were on it. And the, the applicants, they have just been tremendous troopers on this because we've had to have um the, we've had to have the Corps of Engineers involved with it. We had to have the Department of Ecology in, involved with it. It took, uh, you know, we had, we had site visits scheduled when there were the floods. You couldn't even get out there. I mean, we have, if, if, you know, we've had a lot of, a lot of stuff on this. And so I think everybody's worked really hard to, to, to get us here and I'm, I'm really happy that we're where we are and I can't wait to see something on the ground out there.
I've heard you, you all have been helpful in this. Um I, I guess I would ask uh the, the portion where it goes to the hearing examiner and then to council, is that something that in your assessment as a planner is, isn't it, is that imperative? Is there room for maybe streamlining processes there anywhere?
Particularly on the, these ones, I, I would say for, i- if we were talking about a waiver, I would think that the council would want to, would, would want to weigh in on, on that. And so I think in that case, it's a, it's a, it's a good, would be a good call. In this case, where we're just talking about deferring the, the improvements the time of when the development is actually happening, I think it, it's a lot of process um for, 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 for that. And yes, I believe that it could be streamlined.
Thanks for answering. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Nope.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming with this. I love reading about these and knowing more about the process.
Yeah. Um okay, with that, we will open the closed record public hearing. So any parties of record who wish to speak on this item can do so now. Come on up. Okay, seeing that, we will close the hearing and Mary Ann, is, is the ask for a, a motion here?
Yes, there was a, a resolution that was attached to the, to the, the, um, to the packet. So we're asking for you to um, to approve the, the resolution.
Becky, do you have a resolution number?
Ten seventy five.
Thank you. Didn't see it on the note. Ten seventy five. Okay.
Make a motion to approve Resolution ten seventy five.
Second.
Motion by Richard and a second by Andrew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Uh the value, taxable value on that property is twenty-three hundred dollars and they are paying twenty-eight dollars, twenty-six cents in taxes.
I feel much better now.
Okay, just knowing the information?
Knowing that they've paid. Hundred percent.
Item I was added to the agenda. It's an agreement for public defense and Steve Sexton is back with this item. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Yes, this is that contract we spoke about earlier, Contract for Indigent Defense between the cities of Mount Vernon, Seadruck Woolley and Burlington and North County Public Defense from Wacom County. The cities of Burlington, Mount Vernon and Seadruck Woolley have completed a competitive request for qualifications process for the provision of indig- indigent defense services. Following successful negotiations, the cities and, and NCPD have agreed to the proposed contract included in your packet. Some highlights of that again are the term of the contract run from July first of twenty twenty five through December thirty first, twenty twenty seven with a two-year extension option. I believe that's in neck, in twenty twenty six. Uh this contract will keep us in compliance with the Washington State Supreme Court standards for caseloads and other standards that will be upcoming. It's a, it's a condition of this contract. Again, it is, it does have financial overs- oversight to the cities. Uh North County Public Defense will provide the cities a profit loss statement every quarter for our review to make sure they're financially sound. Uh contract reopener if and when the standards are updated and changed again or fully implemented. We will have a reopener to renegotiate this contract with North County Public Defense to provide all the, the staffing that they need to remain in compliance. And finally, there's a startup loan, uh a no interest loan of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, twenty-eight dollars and forty-three cents provided to NCPD by the three cities. Uh we will share that, that amount based on our previous year's case counts. Currently, Mount Vernon is fifty-four point four percent of that, so that will be our contribution. And that loan will be paid back over the thirty months of this initial contract. And one clear correction here, I did, this, this contract version you have in front of you, you just see you have an idea as version eleven, I think. It went back and forth in the last two days, I believe. And there was one small error in section two point two of the contract in the stipend section. It's, it's a simple error. It states that uh the amount per month from January first of twenty twenty six through December thirty first of twenty twenty five, obviously that twenty twenty five needs to be twenty twenty six. So you will have, we will have that final cleaned up version for everyone to sign. I just didn't get it until after, well, after I got here. So um with that note, I recommend approval of this contract.
Thank you, Steve. Council, a lot of your questions were addressed in the committee briefing, but have any others come up or any comments? Any motions for approval with the, oh, yes.
Yeah, I, I just want to recognize Steve's uh work on this. Um not only, you know, kept the coalition of cities together, you know, uh kind of managed this through a change in contractors. Um, you know, watched what was going on at Supreme Court. Um then uh had an RFQ and narrowed it down and. and narrowed it down and saved, uh, the cities, you know, several hundred thousand dollars in negotiations. So, I mean, that's a pretty big, uh, list of accomplishments. So thank you, Steve, for all the work you've done to get us to this point.
Thank you, Council member. Appreciate it.
Huge. Yeah, thank you.
And, and without him, make a motion to approve the, is it agreement, authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement percentage?
Second.
After we change the scriptener's error.
Oh, with the minor error.
Yeah. All right. A motion by Richard, a second by Melissa. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve.
That is the end of our new business. For item seven, I will ask our city attorney if there's a need for executive session.
No.
With that, we will adjourn the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for Wednesday, June 25th, 2025 at 8:32 PM.